All right, moving on to our first public hearing. Roger Smith, Tannery Place, 437 Route 308. Site plan and special use permit. Construction of addition to existing residence and convert barn to second detached accessory dwelling. If the representatives for this application could identify themselves, let us know they're here. And tell us what they're looking to do.
All right, Michael, give me one second so I can find everyone and unmute their lines. This is where we see if the technology works. Hey, Mark.
Hi.
Let's see, Michael Byrd as well, I'll start his video. Mike Welsh.
Mike Walsh.
Mike Walsh with Walcott Builders, I'm present.
Roger Smith is present with Rochelle Bowes.
Okay, who's gonna do the presentation for us?
Well, Michael, I'll start by doing an overview of the project and then I think let Michael Byrd, you know, discuss the, you know, the revisions to the house, the accessory structure, you know, the garage and accessory structure that's being attached to the principal residence after that. That's okay.
Okay, thank you, Mark, that'd be good.
So, this project is located on the north side of New York State Route 308. The property size is a little more than 15 acres. And this application is for, as mentioned in the notice, for site plan special permit. What I'll also note at this time is there's also an application in front of the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals for multiple area variances for this project. And now I'll just, I'll leave it at that, just to be brief. But initial presentation has been made to the ZBA. And there is a meeting, a public hearing with the ZBA on Wednesday of this week, on June 17, to discuss the requested area variances. On this, so located on this property, there are multiple existing structures. And if you look at the lower left-hand corner of my plan, and it's just chopped off a little bit, Jim, it's right below the existing zoning table, there's a list, I've summarized the existing site structures. And that summary provides not only an inventory of what's there, but there's also, you know, it defines each of the buildings and it defines gross floor areas related to those buildings. And that information is important for the application to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. But it's also, for this particular application, that I go through and I define by number each one of the existing structures. So I'll start with accessory structure number one, which is located on the eastern portion of the property. And that is a, it's former stable agricultural building. But there was also a dwelling unit located on the second floor. There's a small portion of the building that is, there was a second story to it for dwelling quarters. The majority of that structure was for agriculture. And it's noted in that table that I just referenced. Moving to the west is the principal residence. And that principal residence, you know, is defined. And then attached to that is a garage, a proposed garage. And that is, even though attached per Rhinebeck code, it's defined as an accessory structure. So that is defined as accessory structure number two. And just to note that there was just a minor change from the original application that was made to the board with regard to floor area. It was actually reduced. And I believe it was reduced by, I think it's 183 square feet. And so regarding accessory structure number two, Michael Byrd, because that's new construction on the property, Michael Byrd will discuss that after I just finish my brief overview. Access to that new garage is going to be generally, or by the existing driveway. And there will be, you can see that proposed drive is, you know, goes to the north, to the west, and then ultimately to the south. I think, Jim, you have an older plan. I show regrading of my updated plan for that driveway. And it's just some minor regrading to accommodate, you know, grading for the driveway and also, you know, attachment to the garage. There's different elevation, Michael Byrd has set different elevations for the house and the slab of the garage to minimize that regrade through there. It's very minor, it's just a little more than a tenth, you know, tenth of an acre of disturbance, very small. Then, right alongside that driveway is accessory structure number three. It's a, it's an existing shed. And just a small storage shed. And then continuing to move to the north, accessory structure number four is defined as the red barn. That's an existing building. There's also a pool that's attached to it. And that accessory structure number four is part of a, you know, is also part of the application to the ZBA. But in this case, once again, it's just to be in front of the planning board, to be considered, you know, for a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. And then finally, the most northerly accessory structure, I'll just call it a woodshed. And so that's shed, you know, shed, and then it's accessory structure number five. And then, so just in summary, application is for site plan special permit. And what it does is it, in the, the special permit, there's multiple special permits that are requested for this application for those existing structures that were used as dwelling units. But in this particular application, we are legalizing them with the planning board as we are proposing to do with the Zoning Board of Appeals also. And so those, they are defined under Section 12527A7. And then, no, those, no, those are, I'm sorry, that's a different special permit. They are defined under the section for accessory dwellings for, under the zoning code. And then additionally, because of the size of this property, since the property is greater than 10 acres, and typically for residential property, the number of accessory structures are limited to three, the application requests consideration of the planning board for granting approval for the additional accessory structures. This is applied for by special permit with the planning board. And so that is actually 12527A7. And then finally, a special permit application for what's defined in town code by major excavation. And that accommodates the driveway construction and also, you know, soil disturbance associated with the design of a new septic system for accessory structure number four. Once again, major excavation is defined by excavating or filling more than 200 cubic yards. As I said, in this case, it's a very small disturbance area. But that is, that is also part of this application. I think that summarizes what I have to say about the current application. Michael, do you want to add some detail with regard to the attached garage?
Sure. We've simplified the addition of the garage. We cut it down, we've eliminated the porches, the covered porches on both the east and west side. If you have sheet A2 that you can pull up on the screen. Is this the right file or is it an other file? That's, that was the original. So you can see that porch there on the left of the garage has been eliminated.
Hold on, go into class, here we go. Not sure, sheet A2 was on?
A2 dated 5/15/20. You're still in the first submission drawings.
Was that, it was in a different set of, a different file?
Yeah, we made a new submission, Jim.
Yep, we made it.
A1. Let's say six. Seven.
There. So that's, those are the new renderings?
Yep. Find A1 for you.
Or A2.
There's A1.
There we go, yes. So this is just a site plan showing some of the revisions to the driveway, as well as the garage. As I said, we've simplified the design, we've taken both the east and west covered porches off. We now just have one porch on the east side to go to the new back door. You walk in the new back door and essentially there's a mudroom, a laundry room, a storage room, and a closet. And then to the north of that is a two-car garage. Do you want to go to the next sheet? So this shows the expansion in red, whereas previously we were 36 feet 3 inches long, we're now 30 feet 3 inches, so we've cut six feet off of the overall length. The garage is still 26 feet wide. And the porch to the east is 10 feet 7 by 10 foot 2. If you go to the next plan, you'll see the layout more clearly of what the interior space is going to be. Scroll down a little, there you go. So this shows the addition superimposed over the existing. The lines in red indicate the colonnade that's currently there that we'll be removing. So again, you walk in, there's a mudroom, a laundry room, a storage room, and a closet. And then we go up to the garage. Again, keep in mind, due to its grade, our garage slab is five feet higher than the elevation of the first floor. And then if you want to keep going, we can go upstairs to the next drawing. So this, this drawing again shows you in red where the addition is being added on to the existing structure. So it's essentially 26 feet wide on the second floor and 30 feet 11. And then if you go to the next plan. So we've reconfigured the space over the kitchen and the breakfast room to make a, just a large bedroom suite. And so that's all within the existing structure. The garage addition has a portion of the bathroom for that suite that fits in the area of the mudroom. So we don't have to worry about the change in elevation of the slab of the garage with the slab, with the first floor elevation of the house. And then if you want to go to the next page, hopefully it's the renderings. And here you have the simplified version. So you can see on the right-hand side of this lower rendering is the garage addition now, with just a simple portico covered roof area coming off to the east for the back door entrance. And the top rendering shows a shot from the southeast corner where the portico on the left and the upper rendering is more or less the access to the front door. And then on the next elevation, on the next sheet, you'll see renderings of the rear. So here on the top, you see the garage doors. The building to the right is an existing structure that's there, that's going to remain. And then on the lower rendering, you see what the west of the elevation looks like of the house. In addition, I can walk you through the barn if you have any questions on the ball.
Yeah.
Michael, no, Michael Byrd, it's Kathy Hammer. Could I ask you a quick question, or anybody who would know? The colonnade that's being removed, if you know, dates to any particular period of the architecture of the house, if you know?
So the colonnade that we're removing was one that we had proposed in the addition.
And, and was there?
So it doesn't exist now.
Thank you.
And any new columns that we do add in the new portico entryway, covered entryway, we're going to copy the columns that exist.
Great, thank you, Michael.
Okay, yeah, discussion of the barn would be good.
So in the barn, the barn drawings were submitted in the original proposals, so I'm not exactly sure how to tell you where to go with that.
Let me see what I can do.
Which of the two barns are we speaking of?
Big red barn.
Okay, thank you.
So there are no renovations to the horse barn, however. Here, the main purpose for that is to get it legalized in terms of the zoning, and Mark can speak better on that process.
Is this the right sheet?
There we go, that's it. So this is the existing floor plan of the first floor of the large red barn to the north of the house. It was renovated approximately 1992. Into the floor plan that you see now, thank you. There's a great room, a kitchen, a small bedroom, a mechanical room, a full bath, which also houses the pool equipment. And then in the wing to the north, there's an exercise room that originally had a stationary lap pool in it that's been covered over. And you'll notice the two arc-type piers on the left, those are foundation and piers built to put a deck to be accessed from the second floors. And the second floor was never, the second floor deck was never built. But let's go to the next page and you see, you can see how we're renovating this space. Really, the only thing we're doing on this floor is we're putting a large 16-foot-wide sliding door in place of a current six-foot-wide French door. And we're also eliminating a spiral staircase that was done in the 92 renovation with a L-shaped configuration of a stair, which will be much more practical and easier to get things up and down to the second floor. If we can go to the next page, you should see the existing second floor layout. So there's basically, on the second floor, two large spaces. On the right-hand side, you see a loft access by a second spiral staircase. And on the north wing, you'll see a large space, which is the game room, accessed by the other spiral staircase. And then if you flip to the next page, you'll see where we've decided to add two bedrooms down that addition to the, or down that wing to the north, two bathrooms, and a deck, because currently, right now, there is no deck. And there is a door, so if you walk out the door, you drop five feet. So, and on the renderings on the next page, you'll see that. We're, just to be clear, we're adding windows to the north wall of the barn, which you'll see. So the upper two images in this rendering, I'm sorry, the upper left-hand rendering is the existing structure with the French doors that I mentioned, without the deck on those piers. And on the right-hand rendering there, you'll see the deck we proposed so that we can safely walk out of the second floor. And then on the bottom two, again, is the, from a different angle, and the proposed from a different angle. So to a certain extent, the only change that you'll see on this side is the windows, upper right-hand corner of the north wall, there's two, the windows, your window in between for the bedroom for egress out of that bedroom, acquired by code, and give them more natural light. And then if you go to the next. So the top image shows the existing structure as it is now. And the bottom image shows the structure with the new four-panel 16-foot sliding door that's going to go in place of the existing two French doors on the lower level of the exercise room. So there's very little change to that building at all, just some window changes really from an exterior point of view.
Any questions, members of the board? Hearing none, who did the site visit for us?
Jennifer and I did, speaking.
Yeah, I was just a little concerned about the closest to the property line of the big red barn, but it's there, so.
I think that we were on the property, it's absolutely a stunningly beautiful property. The use, the barns have, has, I will forget the dates, but the conversion to the uses that they've had to date happened many years ago, in some ways. And certainly in case of the other barn, we're just trying to legalize that. There are very little changes to the exterior of the barn we're looking at, none to the other barn. Reduction in size in the garage, you know, when you're on the front facade of the house, which is what's facing 308, you will not see the garage, at least not in our opinion, from the road. It'll be very hidden, you might see it from the side. But we felt the design was in keeping with the style of the house and didn't really detract in any major ways. We walked all over the property, there had been some questions raised a little bit about the proximity to the pond and the historic road and the bridge. None of the proposed activities will impact any of that that we could see, that we could pick up in the field. We talked a little bit about the change in the driveway. And I think at one point, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was some discussion about widening the driveway as it curves in front of the wing of the house there. That is, that is still in the plan, Mark, right?
Yeah, it is, actually Jim doesn't have my most recent plan. I show, it's on the inside loop, on the east side of the driveway, there's a bit of widening there.
It is on, it is on my site plan, if you can go back to sheet A1 of my drawings.
Okay, so the only ground disturbance that's taking place is for the garage and the, yeah, I see the curve there now on the inside of the driveway. Archaeology's not taken place on the property. I know that Dr. Wentworth, who submitted a review of this, you know, just said it would be important to monitor that. My own opinion is that I don't know that we need to request a specific archaeological phase one, but I personally would like to see the excavation that takes place monitored in some way so that if there are any building trenches or anything associated with the property, that we would identify those as the work was taking place. But Mark, you've assured me that the degrading for the driveway is not going to be very deep, is that correct?
That's correct, Melody. And also, there's one other area that will be minor site disturbance, and that's in the paddock areas to the east of the red barn. And it's for, it'll be for installation of an approved sewage disposal system for the red barn.
My forgetfulness, I'm sorry. But I'm assuming that all of that can be monitored while the work is taking place? Is that something you're comfortable with?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues on the planning board regarding our site visit?
Okay, is there a representative of the CAB here?
I'm here. I think there's a few of us here. But yeah, I had requested a site visit and I didn't get that site visit. So I can't make comments on the project until I get the site visit.
Okay. Town historian, Nancy, do you have any comments? I guess not. Is Nancy not with us, Jim?
She's here, she's unmuted, but Nancy, we can't hear you for some reason.
Well, can we go on to any public comment and keep trying, Nancy?
Well, I'll just ask Kathy, is there anything else from Historic and Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee on this project? I think Melody covered most of it, but is there anything else?
We also were not able to make the site visit that Mark had organized on, I believe it was on Thursday, right? And so we don't, we don't have anything to add other than the archaeological report that Ann Wentworth did. I know Nancy was hoping to make a visit, and maybe there might be, if it's all right with Mark and the applicant, if we try to get any members on the committee who would like to try and make a visit.
We will be continuing this public hearing because the ZBA meets on Wednesday night for the variance. So we're going to have to keep the public hearing open anyway. So perhaps within that timeline, that framework, I'm guessing the ZBA will have their public hearing Wednesday night. And then typically, they have a resolution of either approval or denial for the variance at the following meeting. And I don't know, I think they meet once a month, and therefore their next meeting would be in July, but I don't know how that coincides with our second July meeting.
Well, if somebody would, Mark, if you would, Mark Miski, if you would give us an opportunity to make as quick a visit as we could and as soon as we can, then I'll try to orchestrate that, I will, including Nancy.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Also, with regard to Mark Dixon, I did invite Mark Dixon. I met with the ZBA last Thursday evening, actually, Michael and I did, met with the ZBA. and did, met with the Z B A, did invite Mark Dixon. He said he was unable to attend and he reached out to other board members on the C A B. And nobody from the C A B attended that meeting. So if we're going to have another meeting, maybe you could all coordinate a time.
Exactly. Gather a solid ones.
Yeah, I mean, we have to actually be consulted as far as when those meetings are taking place because getting less than 24 hours notice that a meeting has occurred and been scheduled is not proper consideration to the C A B.
No.
I don't know where the, I don't know where those notifications come from, so I can't speak to that.
I think I got notification from you, Mark, and it was less than 24 hours.
That was actually a Z B A site visit. That is why.
Z B A site visit.
So that did not then justify, so we were not in, you didn't coordinate with the C A B for a site visit.
I don't think.
They would have been notified with the original planning board site visit. C A B would have been notified.
But we also didn't hear until the day of the, of the visit.
Is the town hall has been closed since March.
That wasn't a planning board thing.
Has been difficult. So now that we're back up and running again, we're in a better position to, you know, where everyone's aware of when site visits are going to take place.
Yeah, I think, you know, I would like to coordinate with other boards, but it doesn't seem to be working for the C A B. So I think the applicant or applicant engineer should reach out to me and coordinate a site visit for the C A B.
Okay. Well, Mark, I'm happy to come whenever you tell us to.
Which Mark?
You.
Mark, Mark Graminsky.
Mark Graminsky, if you would just let us know a time the committee will come.
Well, it seems like.
The preservation and committee.
So if I can have everybody's email to coordinate it so that I can put out a time to accommodate both, both boards.
Okay.
I'll send you my email again.
All right, I guess at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If Jim, if you're ready to do that.
Do you hear me now?
Oh, yes, Nancy.
Yes. Did you have, did you have some comments you wish to make?
Yes. I wanted to just give you an overview of the property because it is so historic and interesting property. To begin with, the bridge that is on the property, I think we have a picture of the bridge. The bridge that's on the property is on the National Register and is a bridge that was built by the owner of Skyler House at the time, Dr. George Miller. James, are you able to put that picture up for me?
Yep, sorry, I just.
There we go, yes. So it's very similar to the bridge on Miller Road and another one further down Miller Road. And those three bridges are all on the National Register. And then the next picture that I have shows the mill pond in front of the house.
Just takes a second to get them up.
Yeah. So the water went really up. This house was a federal-type house and it was enlarged and changed so that you can't recognize it nowadays.
That's Brandywine.
Same house.
No, that, that house is on. That's Brandywine, not Tannery Place.
Nancy, do you have any comments specific to the archaeological questions in terms of the garage and the driveway?
Anyway, there was a mill pond there. And I guess you can tell from the from the lowland diagram that the mill pond went quite close to the house. And if you can show the next picture. So that this is a historic picture of the house, but I believe that it was greatly enlarged from what it was when it was originally built. And the Winnicky Land Trust had a tour of the farm in 2011. And that one talked about the barn, which is the Red Barn, and said that it was presently being used as a luxurious poolhouse. And they've carefully preserved original fixtures and fittings. The picture showing from Pilgrim's Progress Road, which is the next picture I had submitted, shows I guess this barn here would be the, the Red Barn. And it actually is pretty much a historic barn. There's saying in the Winnicky description about the beams and, and all. And so we have a number of barns in Rhinebeck that have been converted from Dutch barns to residences. And so we're losing our Dutch barns in that way in addition to the ones that are being, have been allowed to deteriorate until they are torn down, such as one that was on Route 9 above the stone church. So I think it's very significant that this property had been originally used for a grist mill and then became a tannery. And now is being well-maintained, but there is a lot of archaeological significance there, I'm sure. And so I do urge you to have some oversight to any ground disturbance.
Thank you, Nancy. Any members of the public wish to comment?
Michael, because I'm not the public, but can I just? I'd like to reassure Nancy that one of the things we did look at carefully on the site was the proximity of any construction to both the pond that's there and the bridge. And it, I think Sharon and I felt, and I'll allow you, Sharon, to speak for herself, that nothing that was being proposed as new construction was anywhere near close to those historic artifacts and would jeopardize them in any way. And earlier I address and stress the need for monitoring of any and the property for the traces of archaeology. So I hope we've covered the three major historic concerns you raised.
Thank you, Melody. Are there any members of the public present who wish to comment?
Michael, this is Jim. I don't see anyone in the chat box at the moment. So if someone would like to send us a quick chat, which you can do through the through the bar on Zoom video, there's a chat function in there if you go to the three dots where it says more. We just got a question. Before moving on from this item, could you quickly summarize future planning board action on this related to pending Z B A action? Oh, sorry. So, Michael, we there's a question about that and then we have also a public submission as well. Let me unmute the person. See if they'd like to speak. Would you like to speak on this item?
No, I just, that's simply my question is to understand going forward, what will the planning board be doing on this? And how does the zoning board's required action fit into that?
I guess I can answer that. The planning board will be continuing this public hearing. We cannot take up a resolution of approval until the Z B A has acted. It's necessary for them to either grant or deny the variance. If they deny the variance, then obviously this application will have to be modified. We would not be able to approve it. If they approve the variance, then the public hearing will be remaining open for further comment, further information. We're hoping that the C A B and the Historic Archaeological Preservation Committee will be able to get, do a site visit out there. And then at some future meeting, once the information is in, depending on how the Z B A acts, that the planning board may or may not be in a position to take up an approval resolution at that time.
Very well, thank you. I appreciate all of your efforts and activities related to it.
Thank you. Jim, you said that we had one submission. Do you have a copy of it?
This is the same gentleman who just spoke.
Yes, I was just speaking. Yep. Would you like to speak to the memo you wrote? Would you like me to read it? Sure, I wasn't, I didn't completely understand whether my concerns are kind of before the purview of the planning board. I would reiterate what someone said earlier, that the property is a stunningly beautiful property. And I appreciate from owning a home just down the street for 20 years that it's part of the serene and quiet RCFI rural countryside zoning area. My only concern about what's been proposed is whether any commercial activity would be linked to it and if the accessory buildings would be used to support that. So things such as short-term rental, long-term rental, farm stand or agricultural product sales, event space, which would kind of alter the character of how the property is being used and how it's fitting into its surrounding neighborhood.
So I'm Roger Smith and I'm here with Rochelle Bowes. And I'd be happy to address that. And first of all, I'll comment, my, my parents live in Lake Placid, New York, where they've suffered a terrific challenge with short-term home rentals. There are 700 Airbnb properties in Lake Placid and it has ruined many of the neighborhoods where half of the houses are filled with different families every single weekend or groups of partiers. It's then a disastrous situation. And it's very difficult for them to legislate it now that the, so many people are prospering from it. I have, we are vehemently opposed to short-term rentals in communities like Lake Placid and Lake in Rhinebeck. And we have absolutely no intention to have any kind of commercial activities on the property. We are moving to Rhinebeck full-time. This will be our primary resident, residents. We aspire to be very positive members of the community and of the neighborhood. I've been in touch with all of the abutting neighbors to let them know about this project and to understand that we intend to preserve this property as is. The only major change that we seek is to have a garage because there is currently no garage on the property and our garage seems reasonable. And the, the Red Barn is currently set up as an enormous party space. This is not something that is useful to us in its current configuration. And rather than have one bedroom and enormous party space, we would rather that there are two bedrooms so that our children, when they have families, will hopefully come and visit us. And that is our intended use. We most certainly have, have no desire to have entertainment space or any kind of commercial activities. It's completely against the principles upon which, you know, we're attracted to this property and the kind of neighbors that we want to be and members of your community. And Michael Bird, our architect, knows me. He lives in Rhinebeck and is known to your board. And he's known me for 30 years and would be able to provide offline verification of the kind of people will be in your neighborhood.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate that and all of your answers and want to welcome you as a neighbor. So it's nice to meet you, even if just virtually.
Oh, that's very kind. I look forward to meeting you in person.
Any more comments from the public or members of the planning board? Okay.
Michael, it's Melody. I'm prepared to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay. Gretchen, what would be the next feasible date to continue this, too?
I was looking at July 20th at 6:35.
Okay. And Melody has made a motion to continue this public hearing till July. What was that again?
July 20th at 6:35.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second is Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay. And within that period, there should be plenty of time to set up a site visit for the Historic Archaeological Preservation Committee and the C A B.
Thank you.
Further information will come along. And I thank the applicants for being here tonight and being so forthcoming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. I hope Mark didn't go anywhere.
I'm right here.
I'm here. Our next public hearing is K P H Two Management LLC, T Court LLC, Brindle Valley LLC, Ferncliff Nursing Home, P O, Inc., Hall along River Road for Underground Utilities. Mark, take it away.
So, good evening. So this application is for site improvements located on four properties that are located on the, excuse me, the west side of River Road. They are adjoining properties. And the, you know, I can go over each one of the, you know, just, just starting it. There, I've identified them as, you know, four separate parcels. One is, the ownership is T Court LLC. That's the, the, I'll just do this in quadrants. That's the property in the southeast quadrant of the, of the four properties shown. The next one is K P Two, K P H Two Management LLC. That's, that's the southwest quadrant of the four parcels. And to the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I started out with T Court. That's actually the northwest quadrant. Sorry, I apologize. And then Brindle Valley LLC, that's the southeast quadrant of the, of one of the four properties. And then finally, And then finally, it's, the final property is Ferncliff Nursing Home, Inc., which is the northeast quadrant of the properties. This application has been before the board in a different form before. But in summary, what it proposes is to provide underground, it's twofold. You know, the, the main points are twofold. To provide underground utility service to all four of the properties. And then in addition to that would be to, for reconstruction of a service drive, KPH2 Management parcel, that's in the southwest quadrant of the, of the four properties. And so, Jim, if you could, and on the cover sheet, I've, you know, listed all the grid numbers and acreages associated with, with the, with the four properties. Jim, if you could actually go to a sheet, the third sheet, which is the, which is the overall site plan for, for the project. And what I'll do is I'll start from the east portion of the project, which is right where it's a long, narrow flag created by previous subdivision. Is, there's an existing access road that provides access to two of the properties, the KPH2 and T-Corps. And there's, so along that existing access drive, the proposal is to ultimately on the, on, on three of the properties, removal of all overhead utility poles and lines. And then the fourth is to remove overhead utility lines that service, provide three-phase power to Ferncliff Nursing Home. So starting at the, you know, easternly tip of this, where the access for KPH2 and T-Corps is on River Road, we'll travel to the west along that roadway. And that will include installation of underground power and communication for, starting there for all four of the properties. And as you head to the, as you head to the west, you'll see a first driveway on the south side. And there's a, there's a maintenance barn on the Brindle Valley property. And there's, I show a boxed, you know, polygon there. And so in that, I define where the utility installation is going to occur. And it's more detailed on the following sheets, but I'll just stay with this sheet right here to, to discuss the overall project. And so then a portion of the underground power and communication will split off there, head to the south and then back to the east and connect into existing utility boxes and transformers and communication equipment that will ultimately service Brindle Valley. You can see on this plan, just below that, you'll see a dashed line with designation UP-TBR. What that stands for is utility pole to be removed. And so those, those are overhead utility wires that start on the west side of River Road and, and head to the east, excuse me, start on the west side of, of River Road and head to the west into the property. So as I mentioned in my beginning statement, that it's, those are to be removed. The poles and the overhead lines are to be removed. And back to the main driveway, continuing to the west. And now you come to an intersection where there's the, you know, the defined area has a extension to the north and connects into the parking area just to the west side of the parking area for Ferncliff. And the proposal there is to remove the utility poles. And there's actually some equipment for, that, that's attached to the poles that will also be removed. And it will all be installed underground. And it's, and that's the three-phase power that connects into, into Ferncliff. So that will be, overhead will be removed and that will become underground. Then continuing, once again to the west, we'll come to a Y where the driveways split. And, you know, going towards the northwest and north is, there's a, there's a overhead utility line that connects to the north to, to a pole where it drops down to underground. And that serves T-Corps LLC that was formerly owned by Robert Duffy. And so it's just a short piece of, of electric that is going to be removed overhead and become underground. What will also occur there is, will be completely underground is, is communication. And so then that communication will continue and then jog to the west and to the north and run parallel adjacent to an existing underground utility line that runs all the way to, to the tee house on, on that property. And Jim, if you could just enlarge that map a little bit, we can see it's a, it's a dashed and dotted line. It, it goes along the existing roadway and then, and then travels to the, to the west and to the south and then, you know, wraps around and then ultimately goes into the, into the existing structure there. The idea is to, to run adjacent and parallel to the existing underground utility line that's there. It's been marked out. And so that's, that's the location there. Jim, if you could head back down to that, that Y, and then the, the project becomes twofold. The, and, and along the way, there'll be multiple junction boxes and, and subsurface structures to, you know, to, to accommodate the appropriate splices and equipment that the utility companies require for this to occur. And then the, the utilities will then run from that Y. It's going to, there's a, there's a, there's an existing roadway that was the service drive to the, to the back of KPH2 Management Building. And so two things are going to occur. One is that the underground utilities, electric and communication will travel basically along that service drive with the exception of one location. And if you see right in bold letters where it says site plan area, combined service drive and utility installation, Jim, if you could zoom into that, to the west of that, you'll see that, that, those underground utilities jog to the south and then to the west and go along the old railroad line. And then they jog back to the north and to the west to ultimately connect where there's, right by the, the label for the 90 contour is an existing building that will become a junction point for all the, for the, for the power and also for the communications. And then from there distributed in, in multiple directions. It will, it will, there'll be a conduit trench, multiple conduits that will provide a service to the, to the main residence on the east side of that tee portion of the building. That's actually the tennis court that's attached to the building. So there'll be a, there'll be a conduit bank on the east side of that wall that'll provide the, you know, electricity and the communication for the, for that, for that structure. The underground will then continue to the west along the existing driveway. That's great. And then, and then to, to the north and then to the west again. And then ultimately providing power and communication to the powerhouse located on the, just on the east side of, the east side of the railroad. So that's, that's in summary, what's going to happen to, to those utilities. What also is going to occur, where I started the discussion at where the Y was, is, and I mentioned reconstruction of the service drive. So there'll be, you know, regrading and drainage improvements associated with reconstruction of the service drive. A replacement of two existing culverts that are, right, you can see where the stream crosses right at the beginning of the Y, right where Jim has that, he's zooming in right there. There's two existing culverts there that are, that are going to be replaced with a smaller box culvert. And then as you travel to the west along the service drive, there'll be a larger box culvert that will be installed to span, you know, a larger stream. Both installations consider just, you know, no disturbance of the stream bed, better banks. So, you know, eliminating the need for any permitting with the ACOE. But obviously throughout this, both, both for the service drive, the, the underground utility installation, I've provided, you know, location of, you know, small water courses and wetlands and identified adjacent area for the town, per the town wetlands law. So there also is associated with this project is, you know, application to the town for consideration of wetlands disturbance permit in the adjacent areas only. No actually stream beds or wetlands will be disturbed only within the 100-foot adjacent area. In addition to this, there's multiple sheets for this, for this application and sheets, you know, cover sheet two, sheet three, and sheet two is existing conditions. Sheet four, oh, sheet three is the overall, overall overview of the project. Sheet number four is detail relative to reconstruction of the, of the service drive. Plan and profile file, design information, culvert information, et cetera. Sheet number five of the plan set considers the, you know, further, further detail of the, you know, the underground utility installation I just described. It's just a plan at a, at a scale that shows more detail relative to what I just, the overview I just provided. Sheet number six of the plan set details specific information associated with some, finishing up some of the work that we started along the powerhouse. I mean, we had an application for the powerhouse for renovation and, and rehabilitation of the powerhouse. This particular application in this drawing just provides detail for some minor regrading of the driveway and then also providing some, some drainage improvements. I'll say it's just because the driveway, you know, they experienced the driveway washing out portions of the driveway to the powerhouse. And then ultimately handling of the roof drainage, as it always has been handled within the, for the powerhouse with, but it's being reconstructed since it, since it, since it was in disrepair. So in summary, I'm just replacing existing downspouts, new piping and discharging the roof water where it, where it has always been discharged to. And, you know, finally, you know, part of the original application with, for the powerhouse was that roof located on the east side of the powerhouse, that was just been providing some drainage for that roof that connects into, connects into the drainage system that's going to handle that stormwater for the powerhouse. And then it ultimately discharges to the south to an area that it has historically been discharged to. Sheet number seven is a plan which provides, provides for an application that I've been discussing with the Dutchess County Department of Health for quite some time. And I was able to, one of the challenges for this particular property was there was a combination of sanitary and stormwater discharge. It was combined in going to a septic system. And so I was able through quite a bit of field testing, determine a way to isolate that. And so what this plan does in conjunction with, you know, conversation with the Dutchess County Health Department for a repair of an existing septic system is to eliminate that. So now eliminating the stormwater and combined stormwater and sanitary. So the stormwater will continue to discharge as it has been for all these years since the building was originally constructed. Sanitary will now be separated since there's new, since the, there's, you know, renovation taking place inside the building and new plumbing is being installed. I'm able to provide new outlets and new septic tanks for, for the residents. One located on, on the west side of the, of the tennis courts and on the east side of the tennis courts. And then those are simply connected and discharged to an existing absorption field. Fairly simple and logical solution, but took a while to get there to, to figure it out. And then finally, sheet number eight is a erosion and set and control plan for the entire project. And sheet number nine are just some project construction details.
No questions at the moment?
I have, I have a question. Mark, in the, the road, the direction that's going to come off from the main road and go into Brindle Valley, that, that is an unimproved road. Is that correct?
The underground utilities?
Well, where it's going to enter the Brindle Valley property?
Yes.
That is not, that is not, that's just, is that currently just a dirt gravel drive?
Yeah, it's just a dirt gravel drive.
Okay. So is it fair to assume that of all the various roads you talked about that, that's the one that has the least amount of previous disturbance to it?
Yeah, I think truthfully it was just filled. You know, I think they just, they filled, they filled in that area.
So this would be new ex, new excavation?
Uh, yes, it would.
So I, I'm just again alerting us to the fact that that would be a likely place. If, if, among all of the parts of the project, that is the one area where there, you might be watching for archaeology. Because where you're proposing to work in all the other parts of the property has probably previously been disturbed. But I'm presuming that this previously been disturbed. But I'm presuming that this was not previously disturbed.
That's correct. I think it was, it was just filled. And actually about two weeks ago, I had the site archaeologists out there who did the original work.
Okay.
For one of our older applications. I, I looked at, we looked at that area. We looked at the area to the north, going to the north to, to Fercliff. Yeah, because that, that's overhead. And then the short piece that, the, the final, the short connection, removal of overhead at that Y into Teakort LLC. There's, there's maybe 150 feet of overhead power through there.
Okay.
And, and you can see it's, yeah, Jim's got it. There's that short piece. So we looked at those three areas for further investigation, since we, we basically looked at, you know, the entire property before. And obviously, I provided copies of the archaeological information that was done for Robert Duffy and also for Susan Koff. So Jay has all that information.
So that's on your radar?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions right now for Mark? Okay, I, I did the site visit last week, late last week. And we went over the paths for the different underground utilities. And quite as Melody points out, there, it's pretty much all except for those three areas in all spots which have already been for a long time, parts of the road network on the different properties. So whatever disturbance happened, it happened quite some time ago. So that all seemed to be, those three areas do seem to be the only three that would be new, potential new disturbances. We also went down to the powerhouse, which I must say, they did a beautiful job on it. Really, really looks nice. We went over the drainage system off the roof, which is actually over the old, I saw that was the coal, coal storage area, isn't that, Mark?
Yes.
For the coal for the, for the generators down there?
Mm-hmm.
Which has the new roofing that you're putting in and all?
Yeah, just a, a portion of it. It's just, we're providing a, a new base, but actually all the original roofing, which are maybe three-inch bricks, and Kathy may be able to speak better to this than me. Those were all removed and saved. And so there'll just be a new surface with some, with a membrane to prevent any, any, you know, water penetration into the roof. But those will all be reset on the roof as, as they were originally set when the powerhouse was constructed.
They're, they're unique bricks with a groove in them. So basically, it's waterways going down with a slant to the collection area at the edge, which Mark was discussing, which have then discharged to where the, that area of the powerhouse traditionally discharged. It's, they did a very nice job. I just want to point out that our discussions about the doors, especially on the north side, I think paid off because it looks, it really looks good. And you, unless you knew what it looked like before, you'd have no idea because the metal is inside, we're not going to see it. And it's basically going to replicate what it was before. And I guess both the applicant and I think the planning board are quite pleased with that. I found no problems with this. I think, Mark, as I did not realize, we didn't discuss the archaeology to any great extent, but I'm glad that he went over that with the archaeologist. I think that just, they'll be aware, I'm sure, when they're putting in those sections of the underground utilities, just to keep an eye on what's coming up when they're putting in the trenches, just to see if indeed they do hit something that should take further study and should be, you know, shouldn't just be run right over. So I think that that's pretty well done. I don't know, unfortunately, we weren't able to confirm the site visit until basically the day before we did the site visit. So I was the only one there. I know we've looked at this before and under previous applications. So there's really nothing new here that we hadn't seen before that I'm, I'm aware of. I don't know if the CAB or Historic Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee has any comment they would like to make.
From CAB, I still would like my site visit and I'll resend my email address to Mark and try to coordinate something. I requested that before. I would like the site visit.
Hey, can, hey, Mark, can we clarify something? Because when I reached out to Michael, I also had Gretchen, you know, notify people because I was just trying to coordinate meetings for everyone to be there. So I, I don't want you to feel like I wasn't reaching out to you, but, because I did through, not, not, not directly to you, but to, you know, to Michael and, and there were other planning board members too. And Michael was the only one who responded and showed up.
Yeah, I can't always work around Michael's schedule. So if you could coordinate with me, that would be great.
The other problem, Mark, is that our committee got no notice of either one of those two site visits until the day of the one on Thursday and just before the one on Friday. So somewhere in the mix of communication, maybe Gretchen and Michael and whoever can orchestrate it in such way that there's ample opportunity to schedule the committee members and make it work as efficiently as possible for you and for them.
Yeah, I'd like to, I just, I don't want to step on any toes. I just, you know, if, if I'm to, if I'm to coordinate everybody, I just need to know that. But I usually, you know, you know, go through town and then whoever comes, you know, obviously, it's most advantageous to, for everyone to be there at, at one time rather than to have multiple meetings. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to meet with Mark out there and Kathy, your committee also.
I'll take the responsibility for this. Because of the shutdown of Town Hall, which is still shut down, coordinating did get difficult. At one point, we weren't even supposed to be pursuing, we were supposed to be shut down, not making site visits, not doing things like that. It was just in the last week or so that we were told we could do these sort of things. And so in order to try and get something done for this meeting tonight, things were done at the last minute. And that does happen. Hopefully, it's not going to happen again. We're no longer going to be in the same position. Everyone is back at Town Hall working now, even though as I understand it, Town Hall still is not open. I'm not exactly sure when it will be, but everyone is back there now. So we will be able to coordinate meetings a lot more easily than we have done in the past, than we did over the last two months.
Okay. And so to speak to that, who from the planning board, the committee and Mr. Dixon's CAB committee, who's in charge of orchestrating with the applicant?
In the past, Kathy, let me just say that in the past, the coordination has gone through Gretchen, and she's always been on top of this. I think as Michael pointed out, things have happened at the last minute now because we were finally given permission to go on site visits if people were choosing to do so. And so we all need to be a little forgiving here about.
I, I totally understand that. And since she's so efficient and capable, why don't we go back to that system?
I think, I think, I think we'll let Gretchen speak for herself in a minute. But I think we can't be asking applicants to be scheduling appointed.
I agree.
Vigils. You know, we're going to set, and, and there's multiple members of the CAB and your committee. So if one can't come, somebody else can. We do the best we can to offer up options and continue to do that.
Oh, Paul.
And I just wanted to say that I do normally send out an email for site visits with the contact information of everybody that is invited to those visits. The historic preservation is new, so they probably wouldn't have got.
Uh-oh.
Uh, no.
Most to Gretchen.
Yeah, and I mean, everybody, and then CAB, planning board, and the applicant coordinate a time that usually works for all of them. And if not, they set it up differently. So I give you the information and then it's basically up to each person to coordinate amongst themselves when they want to meet.
Hopefully, now that things have straightened out, we'll be in a better position to make our arrangements with plenty of time for other people to arrange to, to join us and do it with us. This was a somewhat unique situation and hopefully it's, it's done.
Hey, Michael, one other thing is you got to see the trees.
Yes. Oh, I wanted to comment on that. As you recall, we had the situation where the trees between the Teakort, Teahouse and Astro Courts had been removed, the locusts. And we had a remediation working with Michelle and Mark and Howard to restore that area. And the trees, when I grew up there visiting, doing the site visit, the trees were all going in the ground. First of all, they're huge. And the way they've been placed there, it's, it's utterly gorgeous. It's, it's exquisite. Hopefully, they have a rather unique watering system there that they're using. And with any luck at all, those trees will take. And it's unfortunate the other ones were lost, but many of them were not in the greatest shape to begin with. This, this I think is going to be very, very attractive for that, that portion of the property. They've done a very nice job and they made a very good selection of species for that area. So I think that's going to be an enhancement. Losing the fencing between the Teahouse and Astro Courts is nice. All of that stuff is gone now. So you have a more of an open sweep there. It just looks a lot cleaner. It just, it does look a lot nicer. So that I think is a, a positive. It's, the trees were gone. So glad to see those trees back again. They've done a nice job. Do we have anyone from the public issues to speak?
So far, Michael, there's nothing in the chat box if anyone would like.
Okay.
Go on.
In that case, we have no other information from anyone else has sent anything to us. Certainly, the 30 days is up for referrals. So I guess I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Melody.
Edna, was that you?
Yes.
Very, thank you. Edna's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. I have a resolution I'll read. Okay. This is for KPH2 Management, Teakort, Brindle Valley, Fercliff Nursing Home, Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows and the application by KPH2 Management, Teahouse, Teakort LLC, Brindle Valley, Fercliff Nursing Home, for site plan review, special use permit and wetman permit under Town Code Chapter 125 and 120 respectively for utility work, restoration of an historic service drive, and work assisted with utilities, septic and drainage at the powerhouse along River Road and Fercliff Drive in the HP20 Historic Preservation and Zoning District. We reaffirm the proposed actions type two under CER, which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports from the planning board members on the site visit to the property, the finds that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for wetlands permit authorized work, finds proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the requirements for wetman permits set forth in the Town Code Chapter 120, we grant the requested wetman permit conditional upon receipt of a special use permit and site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for special use permit authorized work, finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Chapter 125, Section 12566. And we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125. And we approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Mark Bruminsky, P E L S P C, dated February 3, 2020, with note also the excavation of the three identified areas which will be newly excavated will be monitored during the excavation process. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan on the applicant satisfaction of the below conditions and requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser chair, lesser number by the chair, in consideration of filing distribution requirements, including thereon all required stamps, seals and certifications. Payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein from any other town, county, state or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Okay.
Is that the thing from who? Who is this, Sharon?
Okay.
Thank you. I will poll the board. Edna?
Yes.
Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye, yes.
And I vote aye. Am I looking anybody out? Okay. So, and five ayes and one absent at least not being here. So Mark, as soon as you can get that to me.
I'll drop, I'm off tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one more public hearing. This one is Henry Stout, 139 Montgomery Street, site plan, single family dwelling on town and village property.
Michael, I believe Henry's here. Henry, is that, are you on the iPhone?
I am, yeah. Can you see me?
Your screen will, or something.
We can hear you.
Okay, the, I'm not sure how to get the video on guys. I'm sorry. It's, there you are. You see me?
Yeah, we see you.
Okay. Um, okay, so I'm back to follow up. There were a few outstanding concerns. One was the, the easement. And then there was a list from the town engineer. The easement has been provided and verification from the engineer that all points have been addressed, have been submitted. And I believe in addition, we modified the plan to put the house slab on grade to address a floodplain concern relative to the depth of the basement.
Correct. Any questions for Henry from members of the planning board? Okay, any report from those who did the site visit? I know it was probably three months ago. Anything you wish, I know we did this once. Do you, anything you'd like to add?
No, it was quite a long time ago. And no, I think we reported on it once already.
Yes, you did. Okay, I believe the CAB also reported on it. But did they have anything they'd like to add?
No, you have everything in the report. And that's, that's good.
I don't believe there were any historic issues associated with this property. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to comment or ask questions? I'll take that as a no.
Nobody, nobody in the chat, Michael? Nope.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Edna? In a second?
Second.
Kathy? There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows and the application by Henry Stout for site plan approval and the Town Code Chapter 125 for construction of a single family dwelling at 139 Montgomery Street in the RA10 Rural Agricultural Zoning District. One, we reaffirm the post action is type two under CER, which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members and the CAB WAC members on their site visit to the project property, finds that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 125. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125 and approves the application inclusive of the application materials and plan sheets by Roth Engineering P C, dated 10/29/19. Authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the application satisfaction of below conditions and or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair, in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, including thereon all required stamps, seals and certifications. Payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck related to reviewing and processing of applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. And taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the town zoning enforcement officer, zoning administrator and or building inspector, initiate any required permits with proposed use upon their determination to both the terms of this resolution and all other applicable codes, laws, rules or regulations, including the not limited, the writings of the New York State Union Fire Prevention and Building Code, within the purview of the ZEO, ZA and building inspector have been satisfied. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
That was Melody's second?
Edna's seconded.
Very good. Thank you, Edna. I'll poll the board. Edna?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Very good. Henry, you get the final site plan to us for stamping and signing and then you can get a building permit.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, we're onto new applications. The first one, Edward Giuliano, 03 Route 308, Minor Subdivision Lot Line Adjustment.
Hi, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Video, can you see me?
Not yet.
One second, I'll get you up here.
There I am.
Okay.
Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Edward Giuliano. I'm representing myself this evening for purposes of this meeting. And I have a really simple plan, a simple lot line adjustment to present to the board tonight. So I own two adjacent lots, which are collectively known as 303 Route 308. And it consists of the large 63-acre lot, which you see in the middle there. And all the way over to the right is a 3-acre lot bordering that, on which my house is located. So my house is located on the 3-acre lot. And across the border on the 61 acres is my barn. So what I want to do is just move the lot line behind the barn to create, so the house is on one lot, which would be a total of 12 acres. So that would bring it into conformity with the 5-acre zoning, because right now it's 5-acre zoned in the area, and the house is only on 3 acres. So this would put the house and the barn on one 12-acre lot, and we would still have the remaining 51 acres on the other side. So that's the plan, very simple. Not much more I can say about that.
Any questions for Edward? It seems pretty straightforward. I have a procedural resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows and the application to Edward Giuliano for Lot Line Adjustment on Town Code Chapter 101 in the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. The classifying the proposed action is type 2 under SECR, for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling a public hearing for when?
Gretchen, you on?
Yeah, got set down now. August 3 at 6:35.
Okay, August 3 at 6:35. And direct the court undertaker otherwise caused in noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth under Town Code Chapter 101. We delegate planning board members who would like to go take a look. Well, I'll go take a look. Would like to join me?
I'll go with you, Mike.
Okay. I know where this property is, so I can find this one. Melody and I will conduct a field visit to the project site and report our observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, the Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board's review and written comments concerning environmental factors, and we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited site visit and referral preparation of a working draft and approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on August 3, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was Melody?
Yes, it was.
Second?
Second.
Kathy, very good. Do I poll the board on these? It's been a long time.
No.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, what we're going to do is you're going to talk to Gretchen about the noticing requirements. This was, I know you've been through this before, and I will be contacting you about setting up a site visit to come and take a look.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next is Barry Etner. Etner, 41 Violet Hill Road, Site Plan, Special Use Permit, and Wetland Permit, Construction of a Garage, Septic Fill Pad, Decasual Accessory Dwelling, Swimming Pool, and Septic System.
All right. So this is Darren Davidowich here tonight on behalf of the Etners. And just to orient you, the property we're talking about is if you were on Route 9G and you made a left and turned onto Violet Hill Road, just as you passed Burger Hill Road on the left-hand side, the driveway would come up on your right. So long driveway leading into the property off of Violet Hill Road. The property is actually 18 acres in size, so about three and a half times the size of the required acreage in the RC5 zone in which it's located. And there's a couple of different things we're talking about doing here tonight. On a procedural front, we've spent some time prior to coming to the planning board on the basis of the guidance we were given at the pre-application conference, working out a variance. And the variance that we sought from the ZBA was to allow more than the 1,500 square foot of area to be under roof on the property, which is currently permitted in that zone. So we did successfully receive a variance this past January from the ZBA, allowing an additional 2,345 square feet of area under roof for accessory structures on this property, which was sort of a threshold issue, because what we are proposing are some additional structures. So having that out of the way has, in a sense, freed us up to process with the planning board. And I'll get into some other complexities that come with that as we go through this. But again, just by way of orientation, there are currently three structures on the site. If you look sort of towards the bottom of the screen there, the red roof structure in the image exactly, that is what we'll call the main house. The main house, the first thing you come to as you come into the property on the left-hand side. And that is 3,348 square feet in size. And then as you travel down the driveway, we're calling it an existing structure, but it's since sort of crumbled apart. But it's a 360-square-foot shed. And then as you've traveled the rest of the way into the driveway, the building you're faced with is the client's glassblowing studio, which we're calling an existing barn, but it serves as an art studio at the moment. It's intended to continue to serve as an art studio. And that is 1,550 square feet in size. So for tonight's purposes, three existing structures. And then what we are proposing, which should be on the next sheet, Jim, if you flip, there should be like a phase 2 sheet here.
Yep.
Oh, maybe not on the septic plan. It might be a better site plan to use.
Yeah.
Pretty much deals with existing on that plan. Something called like a phase 1, phase 2 plan, or even the green colorings of it. That's good. Yeah, that works.
I'll zoom in.
Guys, so three existing structures. Now, what we're talking about is where the existing shed was, the little 360-square-foot shed. As you enter the driveway, pass the house on the left, and continue. Now, we have a larger rectangle shown there, which is called out as a proposed 1,100-square-foot garage. So that is a new build in the location of the former shed. This plan contemplates a relocation of the shed next to the art studio. If the clients elect to do that, that would be a reconstruction of that shed. That shed is not going to make the move. And then as far as other additional proposals, if you were to sort of head back out the driveway towards the road down the hillways where that little bump off the driveway is, there's another structure down there, which is exactly right where the cursor is. That is a proposed detached accessory dwelling, 660 square feet in size. It is a one-bedroom that's proposed there. And adjacent to it is a swimming pool, 18 by 36. The idea is that this detached accessory dwelling would serve a dual purpose as a poolhouse and detached dwelling. And there's a small pergola on the patio there. That patio is a bluestone patio. So to, basically to achieve the objective of building these two new structures and the swimming pool and associated infrastructure, we need a septic approval from Duchess County, of course, because we're adding a bedroom. The plan is not to connect into an existing septic system or touch the existing septic, but to build a new system just sort of at the end of the pool. If you sort of, between sort of the pool and the house on a diagonal, I guess is the best way to describe it, along the side of the driveway as you come into the right. What you can't tell from this plan is the driveway actually drops off quite a bit to its right side as you drive in with your car. So that is before Duchess County. Right now, for approval, but sort of stalled, and I'll get to that in a minute. And there's the proposed septic field with expansion area. And the other thing that comes into play with this application is we, what we're proposing is within the 100-foot wetland buffer. So we're to the planning board to talk about being allowed to build within the 100-foot wetland buffer. And there's obviously reasons for that, and I'll get into that as we get to public hearing stage. But despite being in an 18-acre parcel, as you can see, a lot of it is consumed by both wetlands and wetland buffer. And then when you factor in setbacks from existing wells and need for new wells and so on and so forth, we're pretty limited in places we can put the septic system. And then that really drives where the pool and the poolhouse want to be, as do the client's preferences for where that structure would be located on the land and where that pool would be located on the land. But we think we've come up with a pretty elegant solution but for the need for some wetland buffer relief from that Army Corps wetland buffer that the town imposes on us. And what I did was with our submittal letter, I sort of proposed this in two phases. And it's sort of very important that we look at it in two phases. And that is because two parts of that are completely independent of a sort of, I'll call it, greater review or the need for any kind of septic system to serve them. The first is the 1,100-square-foot garage that we're proposing. That, if it weren't for the town historic review, because this is locally significant property, would be something that, you know, if we meet the requirements of a building permit, could be put in the ground essentially immediately. But given the locally significant historic designation, we're here to talk to the board about this, which normally wouldn't be any kind of big deal, provided that we meet the requirements. But what becomes a little bit bigger deal is with the addition of some of the other things we're talking about, we're sort of tied into a potentially very, very long approval process. And the reason I say it's a long approval process is because not only do we need the planning board to sign off on this, not only have we already been through the zoning board, but we need septic approval from Duchess County. And our experience with Duchess County has been anywhere from six to 12 months for a septic approval. And in some cases, longer than that. And I bring that up because we're also in a bit of a chicken or the egg situation here because now the planning, recently the planning board has taken the position that it requires Duchess County septic approval before it will sign a map. We're almost stuck waiting to do anything on the property. If the historic review of that proposed garage is tied in with the rest of the development on the site. So I had proposed it as a phase 1. And that's sort of further compounded by the fact that it's a fill system. And given that it's a fill system, the planning board is required to sign off on the fill system. So in a sense, we need, Duchess County won't do anything with this until the planning board signs off on it. And then the planning board won't sign off officially until the county approves the septic system. So a process that started back in October and went through the zoning board pretty quickly, then delayed by COVID, is now looking at another three months with the planning board, sort of best case, and then maybe another six to 12 months of septic approval. So we could be looking at another 15 months here to get our approvals, which, you know, just doesn't seem like the intent of the law. So we're hoping that we can view it as phase 1, where we can say historic review of the proposed 3-car garage and the septic fill pad. That allows us to work on the garage, and then Duchess County to work on the septic as we process the rest of the phase 2, which would be the detached accessory dwelling, the swimming pool, and the wetland buffer permit. So I'm hoping the board can give us a little guidance on how we might be able to achieve that, you know, in light of the sort of chicken or eggs that are created on a couple of places here.
Well, looking at this, I mean, what we have before is an application for construction of the garage, the septic fill pad, the detached accessory dwelling, the swimming pool, and a septic system. And what it sounds like you're asking us to do is just to look at the garage at this point in time. And that's
The garage and the fill pad, yes.
Phasing itself does not bifurcate an application. You'll have to prove the whole application. It just means that it's going to be installed, constructed, whatever, in phases. Very often for larger projects, that's something we require knowing, you know, how long is it going to take to build it, things like that. If it's going to be phased, then that's worth the overall approval of the application. It sounds like what you want to do is cut this application down to just looking at the garage. And if possible, we'll check with our engineer at the fill section. We'll need all the different information about the terms. I assume you've given to the health department in terms of the size of the system, the flows, things of that sort. In my discussion with Dave Pearson, he seemed to feel that they were comfortable with the fill section already. They were just waiting for the planning board to take a look at it. So I don't quite understand why you feel you're going to be so held up by them if they've already seemed comfortable with the fill section.
Just experience, you know, from that point, we've generally found it takes, you know, several months to get a septic approved on top of what the planning board's going to require.
Well, primarily, the septic approval is basically to deal with the engineering of the leach field. And of course, the size of the tank and all, the leach field, to ensure that it's properly absorbed, that it's of sufficient size, and of course, that you also have the reserve field. Which I think you want to, if you want us to break this up, you've got to break the application up into two separate applications. Because if we're going to look at this application as being a phased application, then we have to approve the overall application, and the phasing itself is part of the application. It's not, it does not, or function independently. Phase 1 is not independent of phase 2. That's, that would be application 1 and application 2, if you wish to separate them out that way.
I would love to. I think the concern, you know, at the pre-application conference was that that might be considered segmentation under SECR.
It well could be. That's true.
Well, Michael, once, you know, if the application was accepted, it would be immediately referred to the planet, or to the health department, right?
Yes, it would.
So, so their review would, could start immediately as we were going through our steps. They would run concurrently, correct?
Yeah, I assume so.
See, that's not where Dave Pearson came out on this, because he's saying it's a fill pad. So Rhinebeck has a provision to approve. And actually, Melody, I think it was you who brought this up on another application, that Rhinebeck requires approval of grading in excess of a certain amount of material, which this certainly exceeds. So Dave is saying, you know, until the planning board gives me something affirmative, not that they've received an application or accepted an application, but that they've approved the fill, I can't go any further.
Well, quite frankly, we can't approve a fill section for a leach field for a septic system until our engineer has the opportunity to review it. And the engineer, our engineer's not going to be able to review it if it's not part of the application to be reviewed at this time. In other words, it's going to happen as if you're applying for the septic system for the accessory dwelling.
Right, which is how I've submitted it. But my hope was that, given that, you know, we're paying the escrow, so if the engineer would, you know, be able to review it and say, you know, it complies, or, you know, give some sort of affirmative that Dave would work with, rather than have to wait for map signing or, you know, full site plan special permit and wetland permit approval to move forward on that application, we would at least be able to simultaneously process. And then with the issue related to the bar, the 3-car garage, you know, a simple, you know, could the historic commission weigh in on the character of that without having to wait for a formal site plan special permit and wetland permit resolution to do so? You know, is that committee, is that committee able to, you know, make determinations independent of a site plan approval? Because that would then free up that for potentially a building permit, meaning we could, we can get that in the ground. Because that would then free up that for potentially a building permit, meaning we could, we can get that in the ground.
I think what you wanted to do is either, I don't, I don't quite see how what you wish to do is possible for us to do. I mean, given the application I have before me right now, um, you're looking at the overall, the entire project. You're not looking at two separate, two separate projects.
Right. I wonder if there could be a determine, you know, a referral to the town attorney to just ask the question of the planning board attorney. You know, having been submitted, you know, full application having been submitted, um, can we process it in two parts essentially?
That's segmentation.
But the disclosure is there about the future, did I, I hear you.
Segmentation and, you know, you're also asking for a wetland permit for the pad because it's within the uh
The pad isn't within the wetland boundary, just the pool and the poolhouse.
Yeah, well.
Um, Michael?
Yes.
Uh, I'd just like to add that our wetlands law requires that rather than the planning board accepting and approving uh structures within wetland borders, the alternatives be look, excuse me, be looked for. This, of course, would require a site visit.
I I think, you know, on behalf of the applicant, uh, the site is very, very constrained by wetlands. And and the topography does get rather uh severe in some places. Uh, I'm not entirely sure there's any place else they could do this on this property, given the extent of the ones as as I see it mapped and whatnot. Um, it's something that could be explored. Uh, but at this time, once again, it would have to be done under, you know, a complete application for the property, uh, rather than trying to break it up. I I, which I don't believe we can do.
In either respect, with either respect to the historic review of just simply the architecture of the garage or the wetland pad, because there's really two issues and, you know, one of them not having to wait for the full approval would certainly be extremely helpful in this case.
Without the full, but if you don't want the full approval, then you've got to cut way back on the application that you have before us tonight. And once again, it could be segmentation and that could create its own problems. It is possible that what you could do is cut back your application, but say that you also intended some future time to put in the pool and the and the septic system and the in the poolhouse, the accessory dwelling structure. But at this point, you should strictly proposing to put in the garage, something along those lines. And I think that that might satisfy Seeger that we would avoid the segmentation. But you're going to have to in some fashion modify this application if you don't want to do the whole thing at once, all these projects under one application.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to do that if we can just, you know, get a little bit of assurance that that would work. Um, you know, my only hesitation is, you know, the original strategy that we collectively came up with doesn't seem to work now because, you know, we went to the zoning board in advance because it seemed like a simple building permit application. And then the new historic law came out and that kicked us back to the planning board. So, you know, we received our variances, but we would have processed with the planning board simultaneously. Um, the reason we didn't do that is because we thought the garage was exempt from needing planning board sign off, which it was.
You would have been before the planning board anyway because you're wanting to put an accessory dwelling unit in the poolhouse.
No, no, but we were to come, we would have come to the planning board after receiving a building permit for the garage. That was the, the strategy discussed at the pre-application conference was the garage seems permissible but for the need for more square footage under roof. Um, so simply a zoning board issue. And then, you know, the zoning board signed off, you know, first week of twenty twenty and the new historic locally significant law went into effect during that process. So we sort of got kicked back to the planning board having, having sit down all those months with the zoning board and not processing simultaneously. So, you know, I just don't want to repeat that again and then be staring at all of you again in three months saying, well, here I am with the full application again, having something come up right at post meeting.
And to what extent is the three-car garage, how does that come under the historic designation?
Because the property is deemed or the house is deemed locally significant. So the determination from the zoning enforcement officer was that the historic commission or committee would have to look at any development proposed on the property to make sure it was in conformity with what's intended.
Okay.
So, you know, that's my question. Does that need full site plan and special permit? Or can we just bifurcate and submit that early and then come in with the rest of the application?
Well, it is on a scenic road and that usually requires site plan approval, the planning board for development on a scenic road. Because it isn't a store property, uh, that also requires site plan approval from the uh planning board for any development on the property. So, um, you're not going to get around that.
Okay. I mean, that's the first time this, the scenic road concept has come up. Certainly, I understand it. Um, but I also could argue it's eighteen acres.
You could, but there's no acreage limit in there. Um, we look at some of the other properties like Astro Courts, things like that. They're fifty, sixty acres. And they all have to go into the historic uh regulations that we have in the zoning law. Acreage is not the determining factor in how big it is. Um. Grassman, I mean, acres. So that's, that's irrelevant.
I understand the concept. I mean, it just, you know, the zoning enforcement officer's letter didn't address scenic road. Um, we wouldn't even, I would have said did the ten minutes.
Well, I think what you kind of need to do is decide how you really want to try to configure this application. I mean, what we have before us now, we could certainly accept it tonight and start the process for it. But it's going to be for all the things that this thing lists as being applied for on this piece of paper that I have before me.
I think the scenic road makes it the application you have in front of you, the application. I mean, if it's site plan and special permit required uh on the basis of it being on a scenic road, then site plan and special permits required, um, which is just a little bit heavier load than we were expecting based on just the designation as locally significant.
When was the last time you contacted the the health department?
Um, right before the shutdown.
Okay, because that's, I think it was possibly after that. Or possibly before, when I spoke with Dave Pearson, he asked me if the planning board could just approve the design for the uh se- for the septic field uh pad, so that they could go ahead and do their approval, which strikes me as he wouldn't have called me and asked me to do that if they weren't already in a position to approve it. We're just waiting for the town of Rhinebeck to say it was all right. And the only reason I'm saying this is it sounds as if this months that you think you're going to be held up on may not be true.
You know, I'd like to believe it, Michael, but, you know, multiple septic applications with multiple engineering firms over, you know, the past ten years has shown that there's still quite a bit of a process left behind that.
Mm-hmm. Well, usually they don't call me to ask me if we can do something so they can approve something.
Well, I don't, I'm, I don't know that he said so he can approve. Um, what we were told, so he can even begin further review. We've had him out to do um deep tests and in concept, he's, he's approved where we're potentially locating the septic. But, you know, there's still quite a bit of approval process from my experience to come. Um, but he said he was just putting it aside until the planning board told him that the fill pad was acceptable.
Okay. And of course, we couldn't have done that then anyway because we don't have an application before us yet. Which we could, right, if you want to.
No, that'd be great. I mean, as soon as, in whatever fashion the planning board can say, you know, this looks like something that we would approve, if it moves Dave, I'm happy. You know, obviously, we expect to go through the whole process. I'm just trying to link two things together if I at all can.
Well, what I have here before me is the whole project and um that's what we were prepared to accept tonight and get it, the ball rolling on the whole project, if that's what you, if you want to do. If not, then we have to reconfigure the application.
No, I don't think it's an option to reconfigure. It sounds like what we've submitted is the process we have to follow. And, you know, fingers crossed that the board can give Dave enough confidence in some fashion prior to site plan and special permit and a resolution.
Well, as long as we have full engineering drawings and all of that for the septic and everything, that goes right down to our engineer. And as soon as he tells us it's okay, that's what we wait for. And he's really quite good at getting that done.
Yeah, that's great. You do. As part of the submission, you've got, you've received the full septic submittal that we sent to the county.
Excellent. We should be able to get that going pretty quickly.
That's great.
All right. Well, I will read the, the uh procedural resolution. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows in the application by Barry Hentner for site plan review, special use permit and a weapons permit under Town Code Chapter one two five, section one twenty, respectively for construction of a garage, a separate fill pad, detached accessory dwelling, swimming pool and septic system at forty-one Violet Hill Road in the R C five rural countryside zoning district. To accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. For classifying proposed act is type two under SECR, which coordinated environmental quality review is procluded. We're going to have a public hearing on the application for
August third at six forty.
At six forty. And who from the planning board is going to go to the site visit?
I'll go.
Edna?
Yep.
And and Michael.
I'll go.
Okay, Kathy, thank you. I I shouldn't have all the fun. Edna and Kathy to conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter nine Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Con Fraser Advisory Board for review and written comments concerning environmental factors. And according to the Duchess County Department of Planning Development two three nine zoning planning referral, we refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. Refer the application to the town historian and the Historic Architectural Preservation Advisory Committee for review and comment concerning historical aspects of the property. And we refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Health for review of the proposed onsite well and septic proposal. And authorized without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and a referral preparation of a working draft and approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on August third or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Melody approved. Edna seconded?
Yep.
There are none. Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, um, Edna and Kathy, we're getting in touch with you for the site visit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next is Griffin Dunn, sixteen Bullenbecker Road. Site plan and special use permit convert part of an existing barn from storage to a two-bedroom guest house. I see you're still here. Nope, no, you're not. Who's here for Griffin?
Hi, this is Michelle with Chestnut Street. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, I'm here on behalf of Griffin Dunn. Um, I'm with Chestnut Street Design and Construction. We are seeking planning board approval for the conversion of the portion of an existing barn, which is currently used for storage. Um, and we'd like to convert it to a two-bedroom accessory dwelling located at sixteen Bullenbecker. And yeah, there's our site plan. Um, separately, I just want to note, we are also seeking Z B A approval, um, which is scheduled for this Wednesday evening's meeting for a area variance. Um, as the existing barn is located before the principal dwelling and also for a um, um, uh, area variance for um exceeding the allowable um square footage. Uh, so we are seeking approval for an additional fourteen hundred square feet. Um, the existing structure. You'd like to zoom in a little bit on that middle blue section there. Yes. So, um, as you guys can see noted, the proposed two-bedroom guest house. Um, the existing structure currently sits on a seventy-one acre parcel. Uh, we are not proposing any modifications to the existing footprint. Um, we are just proposing reworking the exterior shell of the building to align uh more congruently with the uh principal dwelling unit uh farmhouse. And there are a few renderings that help everyone better visualize what we are proposing. So. So this is um the north elevation proposed and on the right you'll see the existing. Uh, our client has done a few modifications to the building just to keep it from um some rot that had arisen over the years. So that's the zip that you see there. Um, and if you'd like to skip to the next slide to show the rear elevation um, posed on the left and the existing on the right. Um, so as you can see, we're not really modifying the uh footprint at all. Um, we are just hoping to improve everything. And um the major site disturbances is really for the proposed new septic and well system. Um, and I'm going to hand it off to our engineer, Bob James, to dive into that work a little bit more.
I just had to unmute him. Hello? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so um I prepared the site plan, did the survey and engineering for the septic system. The site plan shows the landsman kill with an associated wetland on the west side, federal wetland, hundred-foot buffer zone, there's also an associated hundred-year flood line, which is shown. Um, as far as the exterior work, uh, mainly a septic system related, septic tank, pump station, force main and subsurface sewage disposal system located in a corralled area. Uh, and that area, you'll see, yeah, if you can zoom up on that. Uh, we chose that area for two reasons. There's adjoining wells that are, try to maintain two hundred foot separation and we have some good soil in that area. Uh, we are uh over ten thousand square feet of disturbance for the septic system. And uh I guess that falls into the major excavation uh category.
Mm-hmm.
Um, although um, um, you know, we won't, uh, I don't think we need a special use permit for it since we're, it's part of a septic system. Um, and um, just to note that we're uh the area where that that we're disturbing is already kind of, is disturbed a- as as it is. We're going along an existing driveway with the force main and cutting across two kind of pad outs or corrals uh with the work. Um, additionally, on my site plan, if you want to focus back up to the proposed guest house, uh, I've shown uh some lighting con- contours, the photometrics. Uh, on the north side and the south side, there's three fixtures on each side. And you'll see the uh, the photometric contour lines there. As far as parking is concerned, uh, we've got uh existing on the site. We've got two spaces for the existing house and we've got two spaces for the proposed uh guest house.
There was some discussion at some point about the historic, the history of this barn. Was some question that, there was some thought that there was a old Dutch barn on this property?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and show, go ahead and, no, you go ahead and show.
No, I, we spoke with the owner and dug into this a little bit, but couldn't find any links um to the barn having any historical um.
What is the age of the barn? Do you have the age of the barn?
Eighteen seventy is what
So that makes it historic.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes.
Um, this, this property is very significant property because it was the place where Freeborn Garretson, the first minister in the area was located. And although the house is of that time period, this, this set, this site has a lot of archaeological value. And the barn itself is a um Dutch barn of a particular type. And um it was built between uh before eighteen forty. Um, has a deeply proof, deeply pitched roof, low side walls. And um it um has massive crossbars in it. Um, James has some pictures if you can show them. Are... Okay, so it was called the Homestead in later years. This area, which the Ben Wagmans had, and then eventually the Bolnbeckers. So I think that any kind of disturbance for the beams in it. And 1995, we had located initials for a builder of the barn on those beams. And what else have we got there, Jim? Okay, so at the time of a barn tour, in, I think it was 2007, these architectural features were being stored inside the barn. And give an idea of some of the things that could be used in the design of the barn. And so I guess you're improving the design of what you're proposing. But I think my main problem is with your excavations. And so you should be very careful about any kind of archaeology that could be beneficial for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Melody. Has that sort of conflicting dates about when it's built and whatnot? Is there any way we can rectify this 30, 40-year discrepancy?
Well, Michael, you know, certainly additional research can take place.
Yeah.
Try and nail it down further. The exact date is not of as much importance to me, although it is important, as what I see are rather dramatic changes in the exterior of the building that I find to completely change the character of an early barn. So I'm not feeling all warm and fuzzy about the design that I'm seeing right now. We've been cautious in the past with barns about skylights. And certainly the fenestration on the backside of the barn toward the pool is a huge change in the exterior of the building. Dramatic, dramatically, dramatically different and changing the entire character. So, you know, I have concerns about the dramatic change in the exterior of what, you know... Pinpointing the date will be helpful, but I don't think you can... It doesn't change the fact that it's an early historic barn whose exterior appearance is being dramatically changed.
Very true. Other questions, comments from members of the planning board? Okay, well, we can accept the application to begin the review process. I think that's our next step. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say before I do the application for the resolution to the application?
Michael, this is Jim. I just had a couple of quick comments from my memo. One of them was just a question about the fence. Are you proposing a new fence on the entire pool? Or was it just a new section where it kind of jogs off to the corner? What's going on with the proposed fence and the existing fence?
So the existing fence is going to remain except the slight jog that you see. And we don't want to come into conflict with the existing trees that are there, the willows. So we're just going to jog it ever so slightly. However, this sounds like we may alter that back facade anyways. So we may be leaving the fence as is.
And then my only other one might be just, it seems like you should put a wellhead protection area on that proposed drilled well that's up by the proposed guest house because you're in close proximity to the septic tank, I believe. Yeah, the thousand gallon septic tank. I know you did it down on the...
We've got more than 50-foot separation. We have the minimum separation required.
All right, those are my two main questions, Michael.
Now, let me read the resolution and see where we go.
Thanks, everyone.
The Town of Rybick, I'm sorry?
No.
The Town of Rybick Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Griffin Dunn for site plan review and approval for special use permit under Town Code, Chapter 125. And site plan review respectively for conversion of an existing barn from storage to a two-bedroom guest house at 16 Bolenbecker Road within the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. Classify the proposed action as type 200 secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're going to schedule a public hearing on the application for... Probably... August 3rd?
Sorry, Gretchen is muted. Are you there, Gretchen?
Yeah, I hit the unmute, but it didn't do it. August 3rd at 6:45.
Okay, it's 6:45. And direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing imposed thing thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth through the Town Code, Chapter 125. We're delegating planning board members. Who would like to go to see the barn?
I'll go, Sharon.
Sharon? Melody, do you want to see it?
All right.
Melody? To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of a public hearing. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 zoning referral, we refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. We refer the application to the Town Historian and the Historic Architectural Preservation Advisory Committee for review and comment concerning historical aspects of the property. We refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Health for review of the proposed onsite well and septic proposals. And we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral preparation of a working draft and approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on August 3rd or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, moved.
That was who? Sharon? Edna, thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, Sharon.
Second Sharon. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All ready? All right, our next procedural is Gigi Mador at 3460 Route 9G. Site plan and special use permit ground-mounted solar system.
Hi, Leah Springsteen here from Sun Common. Turn the video on. Can you see me?
I can see you.
Okay. All right, so we've got a small-scale residential ground-mounted solar array at 3460 Route 9G. This is a modest-sized system consisting of 28 panels. We've met all the setback requirements. We are 671 feet from the roadway and shielded by extensive pre-existing natural screening that is a mix of patches of evergreen and deciduous hardwoods. There, we are 67 feet from the nearest parcel. We do believe that there is adequate screening, but Mike, I believe we discussed in the pre-conference that the site visit would give the final determination on whether or not we would need to install additional screening. That's what I got for you.
Any questions from members of the planning board? Hearing none. I have a resolution that I will read. The Town of Rybick Planning Board hereby access follows and the application by Gigi Mador for site plan and special use permit under Town Code, Chapter 125 for installation of a ground-mounted solar array at 3460 Route 9G within the RC5 zoning district. Accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. We classify the proposed action as type 200 secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. And we're scheduling a public hearing on the application for August 3rd.
6:50.
6:50. And we're delegating planning board members.
I will go.
Edna? And I'll go. We conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with the Town Code, Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 zoning referral, we refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. And we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented to the public. At the public hearing, it may arise based on both the above cited site visits, referral, preparation of a working draft and an application approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on August 3rd or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move, Melody.
Second.
Edna, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have one more. I'm added Robert and Gloria Fox, 232 Morton Road. Site plan and special use permit renovation addition of second story to an existing structure.
Hi there, this is Christina Ducharme. I'm here to represent Robert and Gloria. And also here tonight is Dawn Santiago from my company. So this project is an existing structure that we are proposing to renovate. The structure is the dark area on your screen. It's an existing one-story building that's currently being used as storage. It has a kind of like a garage area and a full bathroom on the first floor. And we are proposing to renovate that existing garage area and the bathroom and to add a second story with an office. So we know there's some history with this property. And we learned throughout this application process that there was a previous application in 2011 where the structure was previously agreed to be demolished. So we're here to kind of, you know, clean up that situation and, you know, do whatever needs to be done. This structure, in our pre-conference, we had discussed issues with the septic or questions with the septic. So that has since been reviewed and an application has been submitted to the, to the health department. And my understanding is that they are in the process of approving that existing septic.
Any questions from members of the planning board? Okay, hearing none. I once again have a resolution. The Town of Rybick Planning Board hereby access follows and the application by Robert and Gloria Fox for site... I'm sorry? For site plan review and special use permit under Town Code, Chapter 125 respectively for renovation addition of a second story at 232 Morton Road within the HP20 Historic Preservation Zoning District. We accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. Classify the proposed action as type 200 secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. And we're going to schedule a public hearing for, I guess, August 3rd at...
6:55.
All right. And planning board members, who would like to go to visit this site?
I'll go, Sharon.
Sharon? Who would like to join Sharon?
I'll go.
Kathy? Will do the site visit? In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 118 Conservation Consistency Review, we refer the application to the Water and Advisory Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Duchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 Planning and Zoning Referral, we refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. We refer the application to the Town Historian and Town Historic Architectural Preservation Advisory Committee for review and comment concerning historical aspects of the property. We refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Health for review of the proposed onsite well and septic. Authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited visit and referral preparation of a working draft and approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on August 3rd or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I think Kathy moved and Melody seconded?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. They were getting in touch with you about the site visit.
Thank you.
All right. We have, we only have three little more items. We, yeah. Has everyone had a chance to read the zoning amendment for this stamp property, which basically in the ORP district would permit rugies to move their automobile servicing and prep facilities out of the village and off of the 99G lot to the ORP site? If anyone had, yeah, had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like an idiot. Where is that?
Or the site?
No. Where is the... Yes. Was it part of our package or...?
It was before, before everything sort of... When was it? Was it referred to us by the town clerk's office?
It was emailed.
Yeah, it was emailed to us after the town board took it up. And this had to be about three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago.
Well, it was, it was on the agenda at our previous meeting and we deferred to tonight to discuss it. People at the time, two weeks ago, said they hadn't had enough time to look at it.
I'm so sorry, guys. Somebody refer it to me and I'll read it tomorrow. I apologize.
We have, I think, 60 days to report back, I believe, on an amendment. So I think our July 6th meeting would fall within that 60 days. And for what it's worth, I read it and I think that Anoros had different concerns about what might happen there. And I believe the amendment actually responds to all of those concerns. I think it's, I think it's very well done and something that gives us the power when and if it is indeed adopted by the town board. It then comes before the planning board for special use permit and site plan, which are also, you know, the details of the special use permit conditions are part of this amendment for the planning board to determine whether or not actually these rugies can move there.
Michael, clarify for me. The rezon proposal amends the zoning law.
Correct.
To allow for the use of motor vehicle repair and service establishment, right?
That's that used to that...
The zoning, maybe I'm misreading that. But the zoning revision is not specific to a particular business. It is to a type of business in that zone.
Correct, correct, yes.
Yes, but it was brought forward as a petition, by a petition from rugies to the town, a petition to have this change made to the ORP. That's why their name is attached to this specifically.
But, so the zoning revision is separate and distinct from any future application for a particular project on the property.
Correct.
They petitioned for the change. The town is now discussing making the change, but it has nothing to do with what may or may not happen in the future. Absolutely. It's just a change in the zoning.
I get the sense that everyone would like a chance to really re-review this before we make any recommendation to the town board.
Can we, can we clarify that our next meeting will be within the 60-day time period? Because if our... Because if, if our next meeting is not.
Then go ahead on and vote now.
No, no, I'm just trying, if, if it is, I think it warrants people reading it. I just want to be sure.
Melody, I don't.
Trying to find the email from Gretchen originally to see what the date was. I'm not.
I'm afraid if I try to find it in my computer, everything's going to go black and I'll.
I know Gretchen sent it, just really quickly as I'm searching for it, I'm just not.
Well, she sent it out this, the day after John referred it to the planning board and referred and gave it to Gretchen. She sent it out that day.
Is Gretchen still on? Can she help find it?
I'm looking right now. It looks like May 18th is when I got it.
From May 18th, June 18th, every July 18th.
Yeah.
And our next meeting is the 6th, I think, right?
Yes.
And I think we do have 60 days. It's not 30 for this. I should probably look that up.
They just sent it to you Kathy too.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
It's okay.
Let me just take a quick look here. We have 60 calendar days. Planning board, it's a bit of a 60 calendar days after receiving the referral, we received it on May 18th, so we should have till July 18th to give our recommendation. So, I think that gives everyone the freedom to take a look at it again and see what they think. Does that sound agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, then that's what we will do.
And one thing Gretchen, just so you know, I didn't receive it. Just, I'll, I'll follow up with you and be sure I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
See if you're on that list. You should be, but things happen.
No, I mean, I didn't get it from you just now, but I'll follow up with you and get it.
Oh, it just said it's sent.
Okay, well, I didn't get it, but I'll come find it.
It just popped up. My internet's a little in and out, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
We have two zoning administrative referrals. Which present a few complications. Under the new historical preservation, uh, advisory committee. Apparently, any application for a building permit. Which looks as if it may involve a historic structure. Has to be sent to the planning board, the planning board to determine whether or not it should be sent to the historic archaeological preservation advisory committee. And we have two, uh, referrals based on interior renovations. Now, with the exception of the adaptive reuse of historic structures for commercial use. We never deal with interior renovations or alterations or anything like that. So we're not going to have any application before us to review or anything of that sort. But, um, so the complication here is frankly, the building department. And the zoning enforcement officers should have the authority if they feel it to go to that committee for historic review to send it to them. I don't see any reason for it to come to the planning board. This is for Roger Smith for Tannery Place and for Jennifer Parsons for the work that she was doing in the interior of her house. And Jim and I, we put our heads together and we came up with the following, uh, following resolution. Just sort of see what you think.
Michael, but, Michael, one moment please, before you do that. I went and reread the, um, creative language for the committee. And it makes no reference to interior. Work at all. Everything is exterior. Clearly states exterior. I'm just.
Okay, this is, this was for interior renovations. Uh, I, I have not recently reread that law, so I was not aware of that. I just saw that. It's sent to us for interior reservations to those two properties. And the resolution that we came up with. What we could even do is just say that we are confused, um, that we do not find that this law requires. Planning board or even committee review of, of interior renovations strictly.
Correct.
Well, I'll read this to you anyway. Because I got it. The town of Bryan McPlanning Board upon referral by the zoning administrator of a building permit requiring planning board review of a building permit submitted by Roger Smith Tannery Place for interior renovations. Finds that the interior renovations are not a review typically under the purview of the planning board. Does not have any comments on the proposed project. Recommends that the zoning administrator forward the project information to the store and archaeological preservation advisory committee. Provide any comments to the zoning administrator so that the building department can proceed with permit approvals. What do you think?
I don't like it.
I, I think that we should clarify. With whoever it needs to be clarified with, that we believe that this is not required.
I, I.
Also that the committee is not authorized by the law to review interior work. I don't, I don't get it.
And with the one exception of, of, of adaptive reuse of commerce, like we're doing with Rockland, the manor house. The planning board is not authorized to, it has nothing to do with any zoning regulations or wetland regulations or, or anything else that we are required to review. We're strictly exterior. There's nothing in the zoning law that gives us the authority to do interior except for adaptive reuse, so.
Nor the committee. Can't you just send it back?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Shall we send back to the CEO?
Yeah.
Possibly copy the town board, because they need to amend the law if it is indeed dealing with interiors. That we don't understand how the planning board could have a role in interior renovations.
Nor the committee.
Or, or, well, I'll let the committee do that for themselves.
Well, the.
Entirely familiar with the committee's function.
The applications perhaps involve things that are going to happen outside in the, uh, alteration of the land. So that even though it is an interior renovation, it includes work on the outside.
But that's not what it says Nancy.
So, so.
The exterior, the exterior work is included in the review by the planning board, but not the interior work.
These are just for, these are just for interior and, and there's a section in the law, and this is where we believe this is coming from, and I don't disagree with anything anyone said, but the law says. For every action which does not require permitting and or other approval from the planning board, but does require the issuance of a building permit by the town's building. Inspector shall refer that application to the planning board for its determination as to whether or not that project has the potential for adversely impacting the historic building. Historic districts or landmark district or the archaeological resources of that property. So that's a part of the law that where this is coming into play at the moment.
Right.
It's, it's a very wide, you know, catch, because it says for every action, you know, of the building inspector, um, you know, that needs a, that needs, you know, that doesn't necessarily require approval from the planning board, but does require the issuance of a building permit. And that, that's where we're getting caught in this in the law.
This was a concern that was raised when the law was proposed. That this was going to unnecessarily hold up people.
Right.
For so good reason.
And that's precisely why that the, when the law was being drafted, we, those of us who were working on it were very clear that we were not interested in interiors. I think Kathy can affirm that, Michael can affirm that. So it certainly wasn't the intent to be. Working with the interiors of buildings, so.
Okay, so is the resolution, Michael, to, of the issue, to send this back to them and?
And.
Should the committee do the same thing?
Yes, and.
Yes.
And copy the town board on, you know, then we've identified a problem here.
Alright.
If they need to look at it to amend the law to correct this, that's 22.
Okay.
Whatever we're saying tonight, we have to be clear that our, that we believe that both the Roger Smith's application and the Jennifer Parsons' application are clear to proceed.
Yes.
Right.
Or it will have the effect that Ed is pointing out to slow down an application. It's not the intent of certainly the planning board or.
Nor the committee.
Nor the committee.
Okay.
Right. I'm going to go in tomorrow to talk to, uh, Kimberly and Gretchen and Ed and, and Michelle about this. And telling the planning boards view that this particular issue is something that we don't feel that we're qualified to do or be authorized to do. And we see no reason why it should hold up. The building permits for the interior work that these people are doing.
Which is what I.
And then Michael, would you let me know the resolution after you talk to them so I can?
I will.
Copy.
What comes.
Thank you.
They'll go along. And I think we need to tell the town board because they need to amend the law to clarify this situation.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Make a comment?
Would like to make a comment.
We are indeed right now being held up from getting a building permit for this very situation. The, uh, Ed will not do it until he hears it. From whomever, as it seems now.
Okay, well, we'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
We're going to do our best.
Thank you.
Um, Jim, do you want to try and draft something?
Should we have drafts for each of them? Giving them the okay and then one resolution to kind of?
Yeah, well, that's what we, that's sort of what we have here.
What, is there any harm? Jim, in approving the resolutions you drafted to try and give some to this in terms of?
There is not.
In terms of the two, pardon?
There's not, because we do say that, uh, we believe that the, uh, so that the building department can proceed with the permit approvals. I mean, that's the last, that's under number three.
I, I would be in favor. This to me seems like a safe way to proceed that does not jeopardize the ability of these two applicants to move ahead. Uh, there's something in, in writing, something that we've all signed on to. Um, and with maybe something needs to be added that, you know, the, that we need greater clarity on this from the, you know, the, the. Pending clarification from the town board.
We could even do that. We could do something like, under number one, finds that the interior renovations are not a review typically of the, of the planning board. And we require further clarification on the intent of this law or the, the section of this law. Something to that effect.
Well, I think it would also be helpful for the people who drafted the law to make perfectly clear that they never intended for it to cover interiors. And for the head of the historical committee to do the same thing.
Yeah, I think that that has to happen. I mean, we need to go to the town board because they need to amend.
Right. In, in the law that creates that committee, it is very clear at every opportunity, exterior, exterior, exterior. Completely limited to exterior if you go back and review that law.
So that, that.
I'll, I'll go along with you guys, whatever, but it needs to get cleaned up.
Yes. But, but I would, I would make a motion to accept the two resolutions, one for Roger Smith Tannery Place and one for Jennifer Parsons. Interior renovations, they're identical.
They are.
The names, so I would move to accept them, uh, recommend to accept them as, as presented.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
I want to just. Sorry. It's, it seems to me that that suggests that they needed to come to the planning board for a decision on this.
Well, the minutes can record that we're doing simply to not create an impediment, but we could say we disagree with the fact that they're before us. But in order to expedite applications, we're taking this action at this time pending clarification.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, this is an action for these two, and we definitely have to do a separate kind of effort to, to amend that.
But can we have them, can we have the minutes record that we do, we're taking this action almost under protest? Don't believe they should have come in the first place.
Want to protect the two applicants from any undue unnecessary claim.
Right.
Yeah, I think minutes can certainly show that. I have a motion in a second. Uh, any greater comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll be going in to discuss this tomorrow and I will get back to you all about how far I came. So, anyway. Alright, well, that's all I have. Um, anyone else have anything else for tonight? Okay, that's the one thing.
I would just comment that I don't know about anybody else, but this is about the extent of my ability in terms of timing. So as we're, as we're scheduling future meetings, I think we really, as long as they're continuing to be virtual, need to be really careful about the number of applications we're putting before us.
Thank you for saying that. I missed a call at, uh, at nine o'clock. Because I never would have thought it would last this long. Okay, thanks guys.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you everybody.
Everyone take care.
We need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh.
Here we go.
Standard turn.